Hey Jerry.
Hey Bill.
Hi Jerry.
Hi Carrie. Can't see you yet, but.
Oh. Hope if I start my video. Have you been outside enjoying the nice weather?
Not enough.
Yeah. I went out at lunch without a coat on and it felt like a heatwave.
Yeah. Watching the snow melt.
Oh.
We've got, oh, Iowa Extension Service coming out to miracles to advise us on where we need to take core samples to see how the hay fields are doing and the compaction of the horses and so forth. She said she'd come in March and I don't know if the snow will be gone by the end of March. We'll see.
It's been melting a lot faster than I thought it would.
Yeah, I've got, um, my front yard is a northern exposure and it's still as deep as it ever was.
Yeah, I can finally see my mailbox now.
Wow.
The snow is like up all the way around, uh, right below the top of the mailbox. Hi guys.
Hi Kim.
How are you Jerry?
Good. I've got, um, you're on a panel about real estate tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah.
I just coincidentally, um, John Dusek sent home with Mary, uh, was a reprint about four pages from the US Times.
Okay.
Basically, the premise of the article was if you're a landlord or excuse me, landlord, don't too quick to reduce your rates. And they went on to say that, um, in the beginning, people working at home, it worked out pretty good.
Yeah.
Activity is dropping off. Um, they're missing the teamwork and so forth. And so this, this article is saying they're coming back, so don't cut your rates yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I actually had met with John for coffee this morning. He's doing really well.
Yes.
That was nice to visit with him. Yeah, lots of good, good conversation. He's doing well and they're holding steady.
Yeah, yeah. What kind of Jeep did he drive up into? Is it the Gladiator?
Didn't have, I don't, if he, I looked for his Jeep. I don't know if he was driving it or if he parked in the back.
If he, he's spent a pretty penny on it. I, I don't know. I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah. He said he's, um, trying to slow down.
Okay.
But he's ready to gear back up and get in the swing of things. So that's good, good to hear.
I, I can imagine, yeah.
Yeah, awesome, awesome to see. Hi Amy.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Finally not completely exhausted.
Oh, good, that's good.
We spent the last two weekends painting here and just had all the, the writing work in the last week and I just, I've been just tired.
Yeah, good job, well done.
No, I just need a vacation.
I love to paint. I think it's therapeutic.
Well then, why didn't you tell me this before? I'd have been like, Kim, come paint my apartment.
You didn't tell me.
There's always more to do.
Yes, always.
Yeah, I may, may have to go to med occasionally. I don't know what it is, the dogs hear voices.
Oh, sure, sure.
I've, I've got one sitting in a chair across from me looking at me and the other one's.
Awesome. So we're waiting, we got Dick and Steve, yeah.
Is, is Rob traveling or?
Yes, he is gone, gone for, um, gone for the month.
Oh wow dang.
Yeah.
Good evening all.
Hello everyone.
Hello.
Evening Dick.
Hey Pat.
Good to be here.
First question I have is, uh, everybody raise their hands who read the 182 page project manual for the plaza.
Don't work it on.
Wasn't me.
And say John's not on yet, so he might have.
Yeah, he might have.
Okay, so there's Steve. Hi Steve.
Steve.
Hello. How's everybody doing?
Hey Steve.
Good, good.
How many people wore shorts today?
Uh, it's supposed to be really nice this weekend, so I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
Something like that.
Yeah. We'll take all the sun we can get.
Absolutely.
So Bill, I know that Andy is, Andy Hodge is trying to get on now and I'm pretty sure that Chad Pelley will jump on at some point too.
Okay.
Mark Parminder will be on too, Kim. He called earlier.
Oh, good, okay.
There's Chad dialing in. All right, everybody, we go ahead and start Hiwatha regular council meeting, March 3rd, 2021. Roll call please.
Jerry Moinkle.
Here.
Steve Dodson.
Here.
Rob Archibald. Dick Olson.
Here.
Amy Wickendall.
Here.
Okay, approval of the consent agenda.
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda. I guess I messed that up, but.
So moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, citizens input, is there anybody dialed in that would like to in behalf of anything other than items on the agenda, feel free to jump in. I don't hear anybody jumping in, so we'll move on. Reports from city council, myself, Kim.
Now.
Nothing here.
I attended the planning and zoning, uh, meeting on the 22nd and, um, I see Andy Hodge is going to be joining us, so he's stealing my thunder. But, um, they, they advanced the, um, plans, uh, for the project that's.
Locked up Carrie?
Excuse me?
Yeah, I'm locked up.
Looks like everybody in city hall froze.
It's warm in downtown Cedar Rapids.
Back, she's on, back on.
Yep, we're back on. We're locked up here for a second.
Jerry.
Yeah, I'll just wrap up, uh, you know, the planning and zoning, uh, heard the plans for Axiom and Hodge, uh, project, property project at the, uh, former Ahern's location and, uh, they advanced it, uh, to us tonight for their approval and I, I mentioned it, I hear Andy's going to be here, so he can answer in detail, uh, more of the quest, the questions, but as he presented before, it's going to be pretty cool. It's a four-story building. Uh, it's going to be commercial first floor and then multifamily above that, uh, with underground parking and, um, then also parking outside. And it does meet the exterior lighting requirements and the storm sewer management, so they have advanced that, uh, to the council tonight for our approval.
All right, excellent. We're all excited about that. Anybody else? Kim?
Um, I just have a couple of things. I know, um, I sent out my report, certainly more detailed than what I'll say tonight, but did want to just inform everybody in regards to some efforts that we are making, um, in, for replanting of trees with Drichio. We've been working with trees forever. And so we have a couple of different projects that we're working on. The first one will be more like, um, kind of a pop-up, uh, pop-up, uh, tree event, which we will, it will be, uh, specific to our LMI, our load to modern income area. Um, and so we will send out individual postcards to those group of people. We are able to partner with Trees Forever and, um, Hy-Vee actually. Um, and we're gonna, at this point, we're, we're discussing that we'd start out with about 200 trees. We would have, uh, these would be at a very reasonable cost, um, for this area of about a $20 tree. And, um, that we would have a schedule of, of, hopefully, people will sign up, pay for their tree and then we'll have a pickup date. And then we'll also, along with that, provide a watering bucket, the instructions. If they would not be able to plant the tree, then we are working, uh, again with Trees Forever with AmeriCorps to volunteer to help plant those trees for individuals that do not have the ability to. So we're really excited about that. The things we're waiting on right now is we're waiting for a date to know when the trees will arrive. And then once that happens, then it'll be a date that provide a planting. Our goal is to do this, um, in April, um, or early May, so we're gonna, we're gonna keep that going. And then the second part of the project will be, again with Trees Forever, but this will require some fundraising on our part. We would like to have 600 trees is kind of the number that we're looking at right now. Um, we would have to raise about $45,000. And that, those trees would be available to, to everyone. So this is private property, separate, separate from our right-of-way project that we'll be working on, uh, which we talked about, Adopt a Tree for the Right-Away. So more details of that to come, but I did put quite a bit of information in my report to, in regards to that. And then secondly, we did also, um, submit our first FEMA reimbursement for Project One, which was our Oak Brook debris. And so that has been submitted. And then second part of that is asking for an extension with FEMA to continue to do, uh, a little bit more debris pickup. That's all I have.
I got a question. Do they have a, a guesstimate of what the trees were that we lost in our area?
Oh yes, absolutely.
No, no, but, but does somebody have a, a guesstimate? I know it'd just be a guess, but.
Oh, it's, oh, you mean as far as like private property? We don't have that for private property. No, we don't have that number.
Okay, okay.
If they had a number.
But if it's anything, anything like, I mean, I would, for sure, I would say 30 to 30, close to 50%, I mean, it's, everybody had, everybody touched, yeah.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll move right on to business then. Public hearing on proposed tax levy for FY 2022. And I'm going to open the public hearing at 5:37. Carrie, have we received anything in the mail?
No, we have not.
Anybody like to speak in behalf of our, our nice levy? If not, we'll close the public hearing at 5:37. A, consider resolution to propose tax levy for FY 2022.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Okay. Number seven, public hearing for a meeting on the authorize of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed 4,135,000 general obligation capital loan notes of the city of Hiwatha, state of Iowa for external, uh, corporate propose, proposed. For essential, I'm sorry, for essential corporate proposed. There we go.
So moved.
Second.
And, well, we're open, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're open in a public hearing.
Okay.
So, 5:38, we're opened up. Did we receive anything in the mail?
No, we did not.
Okay, anybody going to speak on behalf or against? Now, we'll close the public hearing at 5:38 and A, consider resolution, uh, installing procedures to take additional action on the issuance of not to exceed 4,135,000 general obligation capital loan notes. Now I need a first second.
So moved.
Jerry, thank you, Amy. And roll call.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Okay, number eight, public hearing for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issue issuance of not to exceed 100,000 general obligation capital loan notes of the city of Hiwatha, state of Iowa for general corporate proposed purposes, sorry. Oh, we're open in public hearing, so we're going to open that at 5:40. And Carrie, anything in the mail?
No, we have not received anything.
Anybody want to speak in behalf for, of this proposed? Now, we'll close 5:40 and A, consider resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issue, issuance of not to exceed 100,000 general obligation capital loan notes.
So moved, so moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Number nine, barbed wire request for 1075 Industrial Avenue. A, consider resolution proving installation of a barbed wire fence for the property located at 1017 Industrial Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Makes sense considering the application.
Yeah, for DEA.
Yep, I, I, uh, actually am on two sides of this project, so I'm all for it. Okay, roll call please.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Number 10, consider resolution authorizing the issuance of 3 million general obligation capital loan notes, series 2021, and levy a tax for the payment thereof.
Um, so moved.
Second.
So moved and second by Steve, discussion. Roll call please.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number 11, consider resolution setting a public hearing date, March 17th, 2021, at 5:30 PM to consider the FY 2022 budget and directing publication of notice.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Number 12, consider resolution setting a public hearing date, March 17th, 2021, 5:30 PM, amending Hiwatha Code of Ordinance, Chapter 115, Trees and Vegetation in Its Entirety.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call please.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye, aye.
Number 13, consider resolution setting a public hearing date, March 17th, 2021, 5:30 PM, amending and adding Hiwatha Code of Ordinance, Chapter 165 Unified Development Code. A, amending 165 landscaping and shading regulations, B, or B, amending, um, appendix and planning guidelines and suggesting tree planning list. And C, adding appendix, C, tree planning and care guide.
So moved. Second.
Kudos to whoever spent all the time writing all that.
No, yeah. And getting all the different species of the trees and their different, uh, family and all that.
I think Kelly and Rod spent a lot of time on this.
And Pat.
And Pat, yeah.
Pat as well. And, and just to remind everybody, we did work with our relief committee as well and discussed each and discussed each of these changes and, and, and just so that the public all knows, this is all in relation to the Drichio and us moving forward, um, with making sure that we have diversification of trees throughout our community.
Very well done.
And someday we'll have a better landscape. Maybe none of us will see it, but it will be better. Okay, roll call please.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Okay, number 14, consider resolution amending Hiwatha Design Guidelines, Section 4, Design Criteria, ROW, General Guidelines, Tree Grouping, ROW specifications and Guidelines.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call please.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number 15, consider resolution amending table 1- A, Building Permit and Inspection Fee Scheduled For, To Waive Planning Fees and ROW Fee Permit.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I think it's a great idea that we waive these fees, uh, because of Drichio. It'll help encourage people to, uh, enhance our landscape and beautiful Hiwatha, so.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree too.
Plan away is what I say. Number 16, city hall Plaza project.
We gotta have both.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, roll call.
Getting ahead of myself.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Want to get back out there and work on my tan. Okay, number 16, City Hall Plaza project. A, consider resolution setting a public hearing date, April 7th, 2021, 5:30 PM, to consider approving the proposed plan specifications, form a contract, and estimate costs on file and direct publication of notice to bidders.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Number 17, consider resolution approving a summer camp safety plan.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Number 18, 255 and 275 Robbins Road Site Plan Approvals. A, consider resolution approving the site plan and building materials for a new commercial development for Hiwatha Village Center located at 20, or at 255 and 275 Robbins Road.
So moved.
Discussion. Roll call please.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
B, consider resolution approving the CPR to zoning district requirements for the right-of-way access and the building uh, architecturals for the property located at 255 and 275 Robbins Road.
So moved.
We got a second.
Second.
Perfect discussion. Roll call.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Number 19, consider resolution acknowledging the Water Board's resolution to authorize partial payment estimate number two for the Hiwatha Water Department's Booster Station Improvement Project.
So moved.
One second.
Hey Bill.
Yes.
Bill, this is Andy. Could I interject and ask one question on, uh, on project 18?
Yep.
And could I share, I'll share my screen here for a second.
Okay.
The one question I have. Can anybody see that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so as, as we've gone through this design process, we got our boring, uh, and geotech report back and luckily no environmental concerns. Uh, I guess the, the thing we discovered is there's bedrock that we're, we're hitting if we dig too deep. And then the, the other aspect is the current code, uh, maxes the building height at 45 feet. So we're sandwiched between bedrock and then, uh, building code and so. what we'd like to have is a variance to bump the building height up to fifty feet and I guess the reason is as we've gone through this, our retail, you know, finished ceiling is ten foot nine and then that's, you know, before you build anything out. So let's say a restaurant or somebody came in and they had a couple feet of H V A C or whatever might be in the ceiling, pretty soon you're doing nine or an eight foot ceiling. Well, that's not very attractive for a commercial user. So if we could get a variance to bump that up, we would increase the height of this retail ceiling and that, that's kind of, that's one of the biggest drivers. Some of the other aspects that we're seeing, if I jump over the, or the floor plan is a mix on two and he might be able to speak better than this, but because our, our underground parking ramp is down here, you know, we have to kind of meet that grade, stay above bedrock. And then as you come around the site, hop back to this, this, you know, all these exit doors need to be at grade, right, and kind of meet ADA slopes once you hit the outside of the building. And then again, you drop down to make the retail height more attractive. So if we had this five-foot variance, it would allow us to, we'd obviously stay above bedrock, we'd increase the height of the building and make all these entrances and exits work out better and make the, the retail space more attractive. So I wanted to kind of get some initial feedback on that, see if that's palatable.
Okay, Pat, can you chime in then?
Yeah, there's a, there's a process that we're going to have to go through, Andy.
Yep.
For a variant, so in, we can approve the site plan as it, as it was presented in the packet and then come back with the
Variants.
procedures for the variant.
Yep.
Kim, does that have to go through Board of Adjustments?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, and yeah, we're happy to go through that and our construction timeframe, I think we hope to break down in, you know, first of June. So I don't know how long all the approval process will take, but assuming we can get it done before then, I just kind of wanted to see if it was an option we could pursue with you guys.
And Pat, can you kind of give us a timeline on best case scenario?
Sure, if you would get your submitted into us by the middle of March, we can, we can consider that at the April Board of Adjustment, which is the second Monday. That should give you plenty of time.
Yeah.
Your designer should be able to put those variance requests together. I think with the bedrock there, you definitely do have a hardship, so.
Okay. Um, then the other thing is that I don't think this is a game changer, but as we went through our layout, we were able to squeeze in two studio units per floor. So our unit count has gone from forty to forty-eight. Now, we already had a surplus of parking, so we still meet all the parking requirements. I don't even know if it affects anything you guys are concerned with, but it will go from a forty to a forty-eight unit building.
I don't believe that affects anything. Did it affect any of the exterior, Andy?
No, no, our building size didn't change. We just, as we're working through unit layouts and kind of getting into detail, it's like, hey, we could, we could fit some more units in here and as long as parking worked, we didn't see why we wouldn't.
Ab- absolutely, yeah, that shouldn't be an issue as far as I can tell with any of the approvals so far.
Okay, appreciate it. Well, I will circle back the building height news to the design team. We'll read that to you guys as soon as possible.
Yeah, we'll get that in front of Board of Adjustments right away. Thank you, Andy.
Yeah, appreciate it, guys.
Okay, we'll just go back to nineteen, consider resolution acknowledging the Water Board's resolution to authorize payment, partial payment estimate number two for Hiawatha Water Department's Booster Station Improvement Project.
And we had a first, I just need a second.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
And discussion. Okay, roll call.
Steve Dodson.
Hi.
Amy Wickendall.
Hi.
Jerry Moinkle.
Hi.
Dick Olson.
Hi.
Now, that was for eighteen or nineteen, we just did the roll call on.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Okay, this will be number twenty. Hub LLC, a consider resolution approving and directing the mayor to sign letter of support for Hub LLC Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program Application.
And Bill, we do have, we do have Chad on, so, yep.
Hi all, Mayor, Council, Staff, how are you guys?
Great, how are you, Chad?
Great, thanks for taking the time to talk about this one. Essentially, this is the resolution of support that we need for the Workforce Housing Tax Credits application that's going to be coming up here real soon. Hoping that our great state legislators up that money amount, we got some funds available.
Perfect.
Any questions, let me know.
And you will notice too that we wrote it in a way that is for all, all the phases and not just for phase one.
Okay.
Just hoping to get set up for success here for all of us.
Amen.
Appreciate it, everybody.
Hope Deb brings a lot of money to the table for that.
You know, we're oh for one right now, guys, so I mean statistically, we're looking good.
Don't quit, don't quit swinging, Pat or Chad.
I won't, you know me, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
Okay, we have a first and a second?
No.
So move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Amy Wickendall.
Hi.
Jerry Moinkle.
Hi.
Dick Olson.
Hi.
Steve Dodson.
Hi.
Twenty-one, consider resolution authorizing city staff to enter into an agreement with the I dot in connection with the reconstruction of Tower Tennis Road from I three eighty to east side of North Center Point Road.
Some of.
Second.
Sorry.
It's okay. Roll call, please.
Jerry Moinkle.
Hi.
Dick Olson.
Hi.
Steve Dodson.
Hi.
Amy Wickendall.
Hi.
Number two twenty-two. Earth Day Community Collection Event on April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one from nine AM to eleven AM. A, consider resolution approving a community connection event with Midwest Electronics Recovery.
So move. I think there's excellent considerations there for COVID. Shouldn't be any kind of issues.
Nope.
I'll second that and yeah, I agree. I'm glad we're bringing it back. I sorely missed it last year. I'm glad we can at least do some of it safely this year.
Absolutely. Um, we got a first and a second?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Dick Olson.
Hi.
Steve Dodson.
Hi.
Amy Wickendall.
Hi.
Jerry Moinkle.
Hi.
B, consider resolution approving a community collection event with Heartland Shredding.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Steve Dodson.
Hi.
Amy Wickendall.
Hi.
Jerry Moinkle.
Hi.
Dick Olson.
Hi.
Consider, okay, number twenty-three, consider resolution supporting recognition of the Arbor Day on April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Amy Wickendall.
Hi.
Jerry Moinkle.
Hi.
Dick Olson.
Hi.
Steve Dodson.
Hi.
Number twenty-four, COVID nineteen updates.
Bill.
Yep.
Just, just a quick thing.
Yep.
Kim, sorry for jumping in here.
Yeah, that's okay.
I made a note on sixteen that I forgot to ask. I was just reviewing my note. In looking at the the total project and the cost coming out, but around one point one, I think it was. I don't think I saw in this pretty fine print, but I don't think I saw anything for like tables and chairs and receptacle, you know, garbage receptacles and all those kinds of things that are going to be needed for the plaza.
Yes.
Did I miss it or
No.
looking at that separately?
We're looking at that separately because we took a look at what they had. I know you saw the earlier cost estimate that had those in it and Kelly and I started just doing some research on our own. We can actually purchase those far cheaper. Quality, quality, far cheaper and get what, what we're, what we really want in, and so we will provide that and they will, and they will install.
Yeah. Do you have just a, it's a detail, but just a rough idea what we're looking at in cost there?
Um.
Twenty-five thousand or less?
Yes, it would be less than that because we trying to remember what the orig- do you remember, John, what that original number was?
That's what stuck in my mind.
Yeah, that's what I have, that's what I have in my mind too, Dick.
It, it's not that important. I, I just, well, I mean, it is important to have that stuff, but.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I can, I can swing back and let you guys know what that number is and what we think, and then what we think we can purchase it for.
I think we probably will be in that twenty-five to thirty with installation. Shy Patrick probably had fifty-five or sixty. So we might be in that twenty-five because obvious, and I think we were actually going to provide the labor for the install.
Decided, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And still be high-quality, attractive
Yeah.
kind of stuff, yeah.
Yes.
All right, thanks, Kim, sorry.
No, you're welcome.
Will probably be the same stuff, just us putting it in.
Yeah, exactly.
Half the money, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, COVID update, Kim, take it away.
All right, so I, I know we wanted to swing back through at this meeting and kind of take a look at the where, what COVID was doing, what the vaccinations were doing and, and what your level of comfortability was and coming back into the council chambers. We'd still certainly provide the virtual opportunity for residents that if they wanted to speak and, you know, didn't, didn't feel comfortable coming in, we can certainly do that. We are seeing the numbers as of last Friday. We continue to see those numbers go down. It was our Lynn County Public Health Meeting really was, everyone was very happy and pleased to see the numbers, including the doctors at St. Luke's and at Mercy. In fact, Mercy no longer felt that they needed a COVID floor, so they were going to be closing that. So we are seeing, we are seeing the momentum going in the right direction. Also, we had our Metro COVID meeting with Marion Cedar Rapids and certainly we have Springville that participates, Fairfax that participates and Marion, you know, all of, most of our communities here. And so we are all kind of looking at what our opening stages are going to be. Marion has brought all of their employees back. Cedar Rapids is start, is going to start working on their plan for, for this as well. So I did want to kind of take, have a conversation about not only coming and meeting in, in person, if you're comfortable with that. And then also, if you remember back in September, we initially had talked about phase two. Going into phase two, what did that look like for our public facilities? And we end up having to retrieve a little bit in September, so we never really got all the way into phase two. So I'm, what we're kind of looking at now is if we're comfortable with what we're seeing that we would, April would be, April would be the month that we would open up by appointment and just kind of get everybody kind of geared up and then in May, then do, if our numbers are still going the direction that we want, then we would open up the library that it's half-capacity community center along, along with here at City Hall, following the, you know, that we have all of our, we already have everything in place such as our sneeze guards and our six-foot distancing stickers on the floor and our sanitizing stations and, and requiring masks as well, still requiring masks. The mask is not, is not going away due to, you know, having vaccinations and those types of things, but and we can, we can take a look at that as we get closer to May too, but that's, that's some of the conversation that we've been having.
Yeah, I just learned. Go ahead, Kim.
Yep, I was just, and I can go through what we think the, the phase two is for each of the departments and, or I can certainly just submit, share all of that with you after this discussion.
I was just going to comment, Kim, the administrator at the views is now allowing me to come in when I want to come in because positivity rate is in Lynn County is now at five percent and they, I think it was just a few weeks ago or maybe a little more, it was at the fifteen percent range, so it is trending in the right direction.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Hey, and I, and yeah, looking at the statistics myself, I agree, it's, it's going in the right way. I mean, certainly if we wanted to bring it back into the council chambers for April, I don't think that would be a problem as long as the numbers kind of stay where they're at. And certainly is, you know, hopefully by that point, more of us will have been vaccinated, so I think that we can kind of go back to what we were doing like last summer with the kind of the social distancing and the council chambers and mask wearing for, you know, for the interim and as long as, you know, until things kind of fully trend downward from where they're at. At least that's how I see it.
Yes, and this is where we're at today is very similar. We're back what I call our sweet spot and that was in June and July.
Hmm.
I got my second shot today.
You did? I got my first one last week and I'll have my second on the twenty-sixth, so by the first, April first, I will have had both of mine. I'm comfortable with meeting in person with those restrictions that you just mentioned, Kim.
Yeah, so am I.
You're as well.
Okay.
My thoughts are, I, I can't wait to get everybody back together and I'm glad that everybody stayed healthy during this and you know, hallelujah to Johnson and Johnson, bring on the one shot.
Yeah.
Let's go.
Okay, well, thank you. I will certainly provide you with a little more detail on phase two and what that looks like. And I'll get that email to you so that you have it in hand in case you have anyone ask you any questions. And certainly if at some point, you know, if we see, as I've always said through this whole, this whole thing is if we see those numbers changing, then we'll certainly, we'll certainly retrieve if that's what we need to do.
Absolutely.
Exciting, I love it. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else that for placement idle, items on the next agenda or just general, general discussion, anybody? If not, I would welcome someone to motion to adjourn.
Uh, I'll motion to adjourn.
I knew it was going to be you, Amy.
You had a feeling, right?
I had a feeling. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dick. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at six oh nine and everybody have a wonderful night in that sunny weather.
Yep, you too.
Absolutely. Night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.
Good night all, take care.
Take care.